We were gonna start with the public hearing and then go to the regular meeting.
Oh, alright, you didn't want to open the meeting first?
No, that's, that's normally not how we've done it.
Okay, apologies.
Not a problem. So, the purpose of the public hearing is to discuss the application of William Genevee's property located at 517 Route 6. The applicant is seeking a special permit for restoration of the gravel pit in accordance with Section 16 of the zoning regulations. And, so right off the bat, I'm a little surprised, last month, Mr. Genevee's asked for an extension to this month because he couldn't attend nor could his attorney. And I see we're in the same predicament now. And so, Alan, I guess, you know, it, it seems to me as if we have nobody present to discuss the application. I'm sure the Realtor might have some information about potential sales or, or something like that, but as far as answering questions on the application.
Yeah, well, the, the, the sale is certainly an important factor to be considered, but, you know, the, the gist of the public hearing is on the application and how it proposes to modify the pending remediation plan. Also, depending on the facts, you know, there may be a question as to who is the proper person to be presenting the application. If there is a pending, I, I mean, I saw the email that was circulated and there was talk of a buyer being willing to do certain things, but, you know, if there is a pending contract for the sale of the property, that calls into question who, who should be the applicant? You know, at, at the time a real estate contract is signed, then, you know, at that point, the seller almost becomes an equitable custodian of the property and the real person in interest becomes the buyer. And so, I, I haven't, I don't know whether there's a, a sale for the property been signed, I don't know.
I can, I can answer that, and yes, it has been signed for several weeks now. It's supposed to close, but I don't think we're gonna meet the closing day, August 30th, because there's a lot of nuances with the contract. So, it's in conjunction with the Andover Auto Parts business next door to it.
Okay, thank you. Well, Jim, um, how, I'm, I, I know I emailed you about the calendar. When was the application deemed received? And I know we already extended the public hearing.
Thirty days.
Once, thirty days?
Well, I, I'm assuming that was the, the extension. I didn't see it in the, I, I looked after I got your email. It was accepted in June, the application was accepted in June.
Well, we've, we've opened, we've opened the public hearing, right?
I went, I went through the timeline today in the rest, it was received at the June meeting, which I don't recall the date right now, but I counted the days. We're allowed sixty-five days to hold a public hearing and today is day sixty-four. We extended it to this, this date at the request of the applicant.
Yep.
But, we really don't need an extension at this point because we are within the sixty-five day window.
Well, we've, we've now opened the public hearing, correct?
Yes, it is.
Alright, well, alright, well, once the public hearing is open, you have thirty-five days to close the public hearing. And, but that period can also be extended with the balance of the sixty-five days that we haven't used up yet. So, in my current state of ignorance about what's going on, my thought would be, and it's, it's a suggestion, that we, we immediately continue the public hearing until next month. And in the meantime, we need to sort out, and frankly, the buyer and seller have to sort out, you know, who's going to pursue this application if it's going to be pursued? We need to look at the contract for sale, for purchase, to determine who the real party in interest is. I mean, most of the time, most of the time, it's the purchaser. And perhaps the purchaser might be the more appropriate person to pursue the application, in which case we'd have to substitute the purchaser for the, for the seller. Now, they may, between the two of them, they may not want to do that. You know, the purchaser may not want to take that on. Mr. Genevee C might not want to let that go. So, at this point, I got a bunch of unknowns. We don't have anyone here for the current applicant who can represent him in a legal capacity. So, I think, under all of the circumstances, Jed, unless you see another way through this, I think the proper thing to do would be to continue the hearing until next month, and in the meantime, we gotta sort all this out.
So, I mean, I, I'm fine with that, and I can take that all back to Bill and his attorney. The buyers were wondering, they do want this resolved before the sale is done. And, and the buyer and seller have actually been talking to each other, and I talked with their agent Tammy today. They are open, and they did put it in writing, which the zoning office has, that they would be open to another option other than topsoil, but I understand there's regulations. So, they did say, suggest something like a mill or something to put on the property versus two inches of topsoil. I don't know if that's an option or not, but.
Well, we're getting ahead of ourselves, like I said. We have to sort out who's going to be presenting the proposal that you just.
Okay, I understand, I hear you, I'll bring that back.
Okay.
Agent Hallissey. Yeah, I just wanted to, to say I apologize for the confusion, but, I mean, I hadn't heard from anybody until this afternoon, and then there was a flurry of phone calls. So.
Jim, you don't have to, Jim, no apology necessary. We, we're all, we're all laboring under the same disadvantage, so you don't need to apologize for anything.
Agent Hallissey, his, if you received a check for the application fee?
I, I have not.
Yes, and I just heard this today too, and I brought that back late this afternoon to Bill. But, he said he didn't pay it yet because he wasn't sure if he actually really needed to pay it if it was just gonna be topsoil. And, you know, that's just what he told me, so I'm just bringing that back. But, I, I will let him know that he needs to pay it.
Yeah, well, again, you really shouldn't be telling him anything in that regard. But, you know, I, you know, you can certainly talk to your real estate client, but ju- just for, just for general information, the application fee is the fee that's paid to have the application go forward. It has nothing to do with whether the application is going to be granted, denied, or anything in between. So, yeah, if you submit an application, the, the application has to be accompanied by the application filing fee. Frankly, the commission has extended quite a courtesy to Mr. Genevee C in proceeding this far with the application without having the fee in hand. I mean, they have the op, they have the option to do that, but they're certainly under no obligation to do it.
Okay, understood.
So, Attorney Curdo would, I, I heard your recommendation to continue the public hearing at the next meeting, which we can certainly do. My, my question is, should we consider that we don't have a valid application and reject it?
I think at this point, I, I think it's this, at this point, it would be better for all the parties concerned to get a resolution on this one way or the other. Because if we, if we reject the application, the best thing I can see happening is someone files a new one. And maybe it's Mr. Genevee C again, or maybe it's the buyer. The, the problem there, or the disadvantage to that, is gonna kick this can further down the road, which I don't think neither the buyer nor the seller, nor frankly us, want to have happen, so.
I agree with that statement, absolutely.
So, I, I think all things considered, the best thing to do would be to have someone pay the fee and just continue. I mean, there's a lot of things you could do, if, if, just speaking very hypothetically, if, if the application were approved in some fashion with some, you know, some proposal, you could condition the special permit modification on the receipt of the filing fee. You could also, frankly, you could also waive the fee in the interest of, not, and not that, not at all that I'm suggesting that. You could even waive the fee. I've seen it done, usually it's for circumstances having to do with hardship or other things, but, and not this. But, no, you have a fair amount of latitude with the fee, the point is, it, it should be, it should be paid for this to proceed.
Alan, if we're on day sixty-three of the sixty-five days allotted, do we not, we need a, a request for an extension?
Well, no, because we've opened the public hearing, so we're now on a different clock. We're, we're now, the, the public hearing is open, so we have, that's alright, that's alright, Jim. So, we have thirty-five days now to close it, but, we can use the balance of the sixty-five day total extension to extend the public hearing, but we're not there yet.
Got it.
Okay, well, certainly, it's disappointing to me to walk into the start of the public hearing with all this information that's been available for several weeks now and being the first that we've heard about it. But, given that, I do intend to continue the public hearing until our next meeting. And the commission needs to have some time to understand the facts of the matter that we don't have coming into the meeting tonight before we can have a successful continuation of the public hearing. It, it's just disappointing, I know Agent Hallissey has been trying to get information on what is going on, and he has been unsuccessful, and it seems like there's a lot of stuff out there that we should have known about.
Yeah, and to that, I would only add that it's certainly not, not on, on Jim that the, the information is not available to us, because I know he's been trying. And I also, and I'll also add that, that Jim, Jim did the, the posting of the sign and the mailing of a butter letters, none of which he was obligated to do, but, at my suggestion, just to keep everything proper, he took on those extra activities too. So, I, I think, I think he should be given credit for that, and I think it should be known that he's done those things to try to move this thing along. And in fact, it did cost a ton.
Mr. Fitch, you cut out if you were trying to say something.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's public comment, but, I mean, I'm sure it did cost a postal stamp to send these out, and it seems like you guys gotten blown off a few times now.
Okay, so, at this point, and Alan, I don't think that I'm required to go through public comments or any of that stuff because we didn't.
No, no, you can, you can open, you can open the public hearing and immediately continue it. You don't have to, you don't have to proceed with any particular portion of it.
So, at time seven eighteen, we will continue the public hearing at our next meeting.
And, well, before you do that, Jed?
Yep.
Hold on one second, Simone, are you still here?
Yes, I am, listening to it all.
Okay, great, um, let me ask you this while I got you.
Sure.
The, there is a pending contract for the sale of the property.
Yes.
It, it may be necessary to review that, to sort out these issues of who should be the applicant.
Yeah, I wrote that down, I'm gonna take that back.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how the buyer and/or the seller feel about disclosure of this contract.
I will ask them about that as well.
I mean, I, I mean, it could come into this as an exhibit, but then it's open to the public, it's not just open to the commission.
Right.
Sometimes people are sensitive about that sort of thing.
Yeah, I have.
That, go ahead.
No, no, I, I, I know exactly what you're saying, I agree with that, I'd have to get, obviously, their input on both of them. We did have initial conversations today, because I honestly just found out about this public hearing tonight. And I advised my client that somebody should attend and why I'm here, and we already talked about that, but anyways, I'm gonna take all this back, um, get him to pay the fee. And the discussion I had today with the buyer agent, um, early discussions, and we wanted to learn more from tonight, so, is that they're gonna want this resolved before we close. So, right now, I think that the applicant, based off that discussion, will still be Bill Genevee's, but I'm gonna take it back and, you know, that may or may not change, but for now, they, they were, their stance was to get it resolved before we close.
Yeah, and understand, for, for what I said before, this is all, this is all fact evidence you're giving me and, and nothing further by way of advocacy on top of the buyer, on behalf of the buyer, because I, or the seller, because I haven't heard you say anything in the, in the manner of advocacy, so we're all good.
Okay.
Okay, sorry Jed.
Nope, so, the date of the next meeting is September seventeenth, and the public hearing will be continued prior to the start of the regular meeting at seven o'clock on the seventeenth.
Okay. Jed, did you want me to stick around for the rest of the meeting?
Not necessary at this point, Alan, but please put the seventeenth on your calendar for next month.
Yeah, you know, I may, I may be out of town that day. I, it's, it's setting off an alarm bell in my head. I may have to find someone from my firm to stand in for me. But that shouldn't be a problem, because we have a very deep bench, as you know.
Yes, yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll keep you informed about that.
Okay, thank you, Alan.
You're, you're welcome.
I'm gonna drop off, but I appreciate you guys listening to me, and I'm gonna take it all back.
Alright, Simone, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Hope I wasn't, hope I wasn't too hard on you.
No, no, I completely understand, thank you.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Alright, guys.
Good night, Alan.
Good night, take care.
Okay, it is time seven twenty-two, and I will call the regular meeting of the Andover Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First up is the roll call and seating of alternates. And I saw Anne Creme present, Scott, Lee Ann Hutchinson, and myself. I see two alternates, Anne Marie Daigle and Susan England. And if my memory serves me correct, next up in the rotation is Susan, because Anne Marie had been a alternate recently. So, Susan, I'm gonna sit you for the vacant position on the commission.
Five and three, so there's one.
Next up, our additions and changes to the agenda. And I have none, does anybody else have any additions or changes to the agenda that we need to make?
I do, item eight B is, it says on the agenda to receive application, and I would have liked to have said, to set public hearing as well. That's for the soccer field, fail, failed soccer field.
So, you have an application?
Yes, I do.
When did you get there?
Got the application today. And I did receive it, I picked up a check this evening at the fields. I do have that check.
Okay. Oh. Jim, I am going to say that we need no, well, okay, I got it. So, under additions or changes the event, agenda, I make a motion that under new business eight B for the soccer club, we add the words and set public hearing. Looking for a second to the motion?
My second.
Second, yeah.
Thank you, Susan, any discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote, Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Can I vote aye as well, the motion passes five zero zero. Okay, item four, public comment limited to items not on the evening's agenda. Anybody from the public? Have any comments before we start? Okay, hearing none. I'll move on to item five, which is old business. Shoot, Jim, I, I guess it's a, a good thing the public hearing went the way it did, I see we didn't put the gravel pit.
No. No, I, I sent you an email to that effect, but I, I decided not to mention it.
Well.
In a moot point.
You, you did good. Anyhow, first up on is the discussion of the plan of conservation and development. And I'm gonna turn that over to John.
Okay, uh, thanks Jed, good evening, everyone. The, I've distributed, I believe, last week for people's review, a draft of a PowerPoint presentation that we would propose to go through at a public information session to basically catch the public up to where we are in our current, our current process, as well as letting people know what exactly a plan of conservation and development is, what it's for, and what, what is going into it. And as part of that, we would go over three main sections of progress to date, first being the basic demographic section that, that we reviewed on this commission probably six or seven months ago. Just, you know, housing demographics, population demographics, aging, income, jobs. And then going through the tentative results of, or the results to date of the public input survey, of which we have currently received, let's see, two hundred and, over two hundred and thirty responses, which I think is pretty good. So, we would go over that data. And then the last thing would be to talk through the vision statement that we worked on for a couple of months, as well as how the vision statement breaks down into the, the sections of the plan that we will be writing, basically, from the point of the public information session forward. So, essentially, it's to get people up to, up to speed on the plan itself, what it's for, and where we are in the process. I'm happy to buzz through, you've seen a lot of the stuff before, we, because we did the demographic section and we went through the results of the survey when we had, I don't know, maybe a hundred and fifty responses or so, and, and the response, you know, tendencies haven't, haven't changed that much. But I, I did send it out so people could get a sense of, of what we were proposing to present. So, I'll, I'll stop there, I can, I can share briefly the, the PowerPoint if you'd like, but, but hopefully people got a chance to take a look, and I'd be happy to talk through any, any comments or questions people had.
I would like to go through it, John, it, you know, certainly, we don't need to, to take a lot of time on the vision statement in, in the, the last couple of things that we spent in-depth at, at the last meeting, but, as I went through, I had several comments and, and that sort of thing. Before you start, though, I would like to point out that in the agenda, it said we were looking at September twenty-first as the tentative date. As I recall, when we looked at the calendars, that was really September twelfth.
Right, Thursday the twelfth, not, not Saturday the twenty-first.
Yes. So anyhow, please proceed.
Okay, alright, so, as I, as I stated, again, we're gonna sort of review the three major components thus far, the demographics, survey and results, uh, survey results and, and the vision statement. Talking a little bit about, again, catching people up to speed, because this is ideally a generic town public audience, not, not made up of, of commissioners like yourself necessarily. That just talks a little bit about what the plan of conservation and development is, coming from a state statutory mandate, and, and then some of the items that are required to be considered, public health, recreation, social services, affordable housing, cluster development, uh, energy efficiency, and that sort of thing, to kind of go through the, the, the quick checkbox of items to consider. Talk about why it's, it's important, because it can be used in a number of ways, particularly, and something, this is something that we've done in the relatively recent past, reviewing of municipal improvements to make sure that the town is making investments or divestments that, that are advancing the goals of the plan of conservation and development. And in that similar way, to support grant applications and to basically support a, attempts to, to implement the recommendations of the plan, both in, in, you know, state and federal funding particularly. Those funds frequently follow plans. Looking at zoning regulation amendments, which again should represent an implementation and a, and a philosophical harmony with the goals of the plan of conservation and development. So, for instance, if you're looking to increase housing density in a certain area of town, the zoning, the zoning changes should, should reflect that as well. And then basically being kind of like the philosophical statement of, of where are we headed and how are we intending to get there? So, present in, in a little bit more detail to the public that. And then talking a little bit about how, aside from that broad guidance about what a plan is supposed to be, municipalities have broad latitude to come up with the plan and, and, and define their own process. So, I just sort of wanna explain how Andover is doing that this time, leading, leading through the committee of the whole, planning and zoning is, didn't, did not set up a, a separate ad hoc committee or anything like that, it's being done in this group. Again, with support from myself, with support from Eric. Looking at where we've come from the 2015 plan, how we've changed as a, as a, as a, a community, comparing and contrasting with what this, where the state is heading and where the capital region is heading. And then, and then some of the nitty gritty of what we're actually doing, again, the community survey, taking a look at the town's existing plans, whether that's the, the, uh, the town's investment, the major investments plan, you know, open space plan, the, the affordable housing plan. And then, the, the part that will sort of follow the public information session, which is those in-depth the public information session, which is those in-depth discussions with stakeholder groups. Not only town staff, folks from, you know, public works like Jim, you know, land use staff like Jim, as well as folks from conservation and open space groups, land trust, Hop River, and then economic development and other and other commissions to have those sort of in-depth conversations about the the specific topics at hand. And then going through the the demographics that we reviewed, and I'll buzz through this very quickly. Talking through population where we where we are from an ethnic an ethnic breakdown. You know, again, unsurprising, the the great majority, nearly ninety percent of the town is non Hispanic white with sort of a scattering of of various other ethnic groups. And then also comparing Andover with the with Connecticut as a whole, talking a little bit about where our population is going, not only historically over the last ten years, shrinking a little bit. And again, the numbers are relatively small. We've, you know, lost maybe one hundred and fifty population over over ten years. And then and then where it's projected again, and and focusing on the fact that this is not written in stone, and a lot can change, particularly even when the population projections were done. We want to reinforce that the population projections were done somewhere between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty. And, you know, at the time those were done, let's say, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, obviously, no one saw COVID coming, and no one saw, you know, the different different housing trends necessarily. So the the population trends aren't certainly locked in locked in stone and and can evolve.
On that one, John. You know, one of the things that I wrestled with is we were coming through all this stuff is how how big a problem is the declining population trend, or maybe not at all. But one of the things that I think is really key that I'd like some thought on how to highlight that the twenty twenty-three population there of thirty-one hundred and sixty. And so you know, over the course of the last three years, the population has not gone down at all. It's either stayed the same or gone up just a little bit. And and that really, you know, is counter to the what's, you know, a fairly significant drop off in calculation that the projections go. So I think that's a big deal that, you know, we're not going down right this minute. I think that's great news.
Yeah, and I think I think, you know, and and again, as I said, that could be, well, you know, number one, that could be this, that the projections miscalculated, and and these are small numbers. Because they were, it wasn't projected to drop off significantly. But that also could be a reflection of COVID, you know, of people sticking around or or, you know, sticking around Andover when they might otherwise have have moved. Some people moving into Andover because of, you know, the the perception of of crowding in in larger cities. Yeah, I mean, it could, it could be a variety of those factors, but, you know, again, in it with relatively small numbers, these small factors can make a make a difference.
Well, that you know, small number sort of took that off my concern chart, you know, that was that was a big concern to me, and I'm saying, hmm, maybe not. We we too early to declare doom and gloom, and I think that, you know, that was great.
Good point. We'll all we'll certainly highlight that. Looking a little bit at the demographics, again, noting that even more so that you can see the the population trends, the demographic trends is that Andover, like much of Connecticut, is aging. And and as you see, the the darker lines, the 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 higher bars seem to be migrating to the right. So so Andover seems to be aging in place, which is which is a common thing to Connecticut. However, it being common doesn't necessarily mean that it's not an issue, and we don't need to grapple with it. It certainly it certainly is something to grapple with as as more and more of our population as a percentage is is aging into the senior cohorts.
Well, and on that slide, I think it's worth highlighting the fact that, you know, the under five years is actually starting to increase a little bit, you know, and is probably twice the amount that we've got in the five to nine years. And so it certainly says something about what the future elementary school and eventually, you know, I don't know if that trend is going to continue, but the elementary school population is not going to be going down anytime soon. So I I thought that was a good news piece. Eric would probably disagree with me because he.
John, I have a question. It's a forty-five to fifty-four.
Yeah.
Year classes, eighteen percent of population?
Forty-five to fifty-four. Did I read that? Oh, yeah, but yeah, that's there's something wrong there. Because the number above it is twelve percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. That number above it should be more like twenty if the bar is accurate.
Yeah, let me, that's, thank you. Let me let me verify what that should be. Well, it's it's so total residents, you're you're just over six hundred. So that, yeah, that is about twenty percent. So that, yeah, that.
Yeah, I think probably twenty-one instead of twelve is probably inverted, maybe.
Okay.
Looking at the graph off to the right of.
All right, it could be twenty-one.
Yep.
Yep, it is from an affordability standpoint, certainly. It does see if the the trends we're seeing now in pre-K old were in for an incredible tax rise in the town. Because education drives our overall costs, so do what you can to convince people not to have children.
Smaller vibrant households. Okay, so then going on again, household size. Andover household size has actually been remarkably stable, and I think that that reflects the sort of good, good family town nature of Andover is is, you know, population household size is declining, generally speaking, and particularly in in Connecticut as a whole. But Andover has been remarkably stable. But household sizes do tend to be relatively small. If you combine one and two-person households, you're looking at over sixty percent, you know, getting on two-thirds of the population lives in one or two-person households. So that's that's a that's a way in which you could see population stagnation or even even slight decline, but no real demand loss in terms of housing units. Largely because we have smaller, you know, we we there's a there's a smaller number of people in the same amount of households. So that's something to to certainly look out for and and plan for as as people are looking to to downsize.
So, John, you just said you said smaller number of people in the same number of households. And I agree, the number of houses in Andover has stayed about the same over the last twenty years. There hasn't been a lot of building. But if the population has gone down over the last twenty years, I don't know how that two-point-six-four number can stay the same.
It's yes, and I think I I what I really meant to refer to is is sort of the the overall trends we've seen in Connecticut, not necessarily Andover's very specific condition.
But still, if our population has gone down and the number of houses have stayed the same.
Yeah, well, then then that that number.
Means that average number would change.
Yeah, and again, we haven't seen that. That that's that that was just that was a American Community Survey number from four years ago now. But yeah, I don't know not to not to discredit that, but yeah, it's that's your math is correct, Jen.
Okay. Okay, I'll think about that because, you know, when we go
Yeah.
talk to the public about the presentation, I would like it to at least have made sense to me before we get there.
Sure. And I'm I, yeah, I think I'm kind of free associating from some of these these data points and not necessarily focusing it entirely on Andover. I was that one I was kind of referring to a a larger, the larger statewide trend of of reducing household size numbers. Um, so I'll make a note to focus on the on the Andover numbers more specifically. Median household income, again, Andover doing relatively well, even even relative to our cohort in Talon County. Solid twenty thousand dollars average household income over the state average. I'm sorry, state median. And then the the chart in the lower of the map in the lower left is an in migration, out migration for employment. So there are there the number of jobs in Andover is relatively small. There's there's only about three hundred and fifty jobs. That was part of the survey in Andover. The great majority of those jobs are filled by people coming into Andover, and most of the people of working age in Andover are leaving the town for for employment, over fifteen hundred are leaving. So only as of time that that survey, which I believe was a twenty twenty, only only about seventy people were both living and working in Andover. It's basically Eric and sixty-eight of his closest friends.
Did I comment on the the median household income? I know when we did our affordable housing presentation, I think I thought the median came in at a hundred and eight, and that could have been from year twenty twenty-two or something.
Yeah, that could have been, and it's also, it also yeah, it draws from a couple of different sources, and some of the medians are drawn from certain household sizes. So, you know, they they take a two and a half person household versus versus the the, you know, the total income and total number of households. So it you have to make sure that you're doing an apples to apples, but but yeah. This is that's taken from this is taken from HUD, I believe, the twenty twenty number.
Yeah.
And and again, low, low, very low unemployment in Andover, although very low, very low employment numbers, period. But but the jobs in Andover are generally filled. So after after looking at some of the demographics, we we wanted to talk about seeking public input, and so I threw our our the ad that was in the River East and encouraging people to to participate in the online survey, which was on Survey Monkey. We also had a number of hard copies available at Town Hall and at the Senior Center and the library. And so we've got the over two hundred and thirty responses. The the survey is still open. There is still time to to fill it out, but at this point, we we haven't had any any real earthquakes of of new directions that that participants have have determined. Most most folks live in Andover, as we saw with the with the in migration, out migration map, living in Andover, working elsewhere or living in Andover and are retired. Those are the the by far the plurality of participants in the survey. We have we talked about economic development priorities. The in this case, the 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 longer bands represent a higher priority. So more retail along Route Six was the highest priority, along with restaurants and medical services or services and medical offices on Route Six were the three most popular responses, followed by small and home-based businesses, visitor-based businesses, growing existing small businesses. The the least popular was no major changes. I think everyone, most everyone recognized that there was opportunity for growth, and I think particularly along Route Six.
Hey, two comments on that, John, and you know, the words at the top say priorities from one being the top priority is seven being the lowest. So with those words up there, I would almost think that the most that most people thought that the highest priority was no changes in business.
Right. So, yeah, when when the data is displayed, and I can explain this, I can, well, I can either take out the, I I put the questions in there because that was that as the questions actually appeared on the survey.
Yep.
But when we did the data view, we we inverted the calculation so that that the longer bars would would represent the more more popular answers.
Then in the the second comment would be I had the misconception that more businesses were going to be an economic boom for Andover. And I think, you know, other people probably thought that, too. And when Eric described how little tax benefit, you know, the average taxpayer got from having the Dollar General out there, I I was quite surprised. So if if the people in the town think that our tax bill is going to go down because we get a couple of restaurants or something, that's that's not going to be the case, you know. We're going to, we're going to increase the tax revenue by getting more housing in Andover.
Yeah, I mean, that's that. I think that's a really worthwhile point, and that's something that I'm I know I know Eric has some of the the numbers at his fingertips on. I don't know if this is Jed during the actual presentation, if you want to pause and kind of have that discussion here. I mean, we certainly didn't include any fiscal indications in the in the question itself. The question itself was really meant to be kind of like what's what's missing, you know, where what should we be growing, you know, not really any tax implications, but I it's it's a very good point to make to, you know, indicate that, you know, a couple of retail destinations or a couple of restaurants is not going to be a a tax panacea.
Yep, just my comment. And my dialogue with you is primarily so that I better understand what what it is that we're going through.
Sure.
So I can help explain it.
Right. I mean, I guess my takeaway, and and I looked at that pretty extensively because, you know, everybody said to me, you know, you need all this economic development, you need businesses. And to make a, you know, a a ten percent decrease in town taxes means something like thirty-five Dollar Generals in the town of Andover. It's a really big number. You know, or forty Dollar Generals in the town of Andover, or forty-five gas stations. I mean, that there are some industries by virtue of what they have for equipment can provide a reasonably big boost for a small footprint. But at the same time, the state of Connecticut has given a manufacturing tax break that reduces a lot of the things that traditionally would have you know, been able to generate a lot of tax revenue. So you're left with things that are essentially kind of really unpopular that would make a big difference, like you know, the infusion station would have made a noticeable difference in town tax. Hugely unpopular. A trash-to-energy plant would make a huge dent in town taxation. Incredibly unpopular. So so we're not getting out of that without a kind of a major transformation of the town and thinking that we're going to do something significant to lower residential taxes. The only real way to lower residential taxes is provide residents less service. And you got to make your decision, you know, where you want to fall on that spectrum.
I think one of the things that that we can try to educate the public on is that with the little bit of tax help, we certainly don't want to jeopardize the the pastoral views that you have driving down Route Six through Andover to put up a bunch of economic development in the hopes that it's going to lower the taxes. I would never want to lose, you know, those farms we have out on Route Six, and I think it's just a very beautiful view for people as you're driving through the town.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, there's 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 obviously a lot of the trade-offs to consider tax revenues and and community views and that sort of thing. Going through furthermore, the survey, looking at housing opportunities, housing options. Again, this is for whom are housing options needed? Most and and the most popular answers are were seniors and downsizers, and particularly young families. A relatively small minority, less than twenty-five percent stated that we don't really need more housing. So I do think there is a recognition in town that some more housing options are needed, and and I think accurately reflects the the demographics. And the the aging of the population.
So so the question I have for the commission is what kind of housing do we think is most appropriate for the young families? what kind of housing do we think is most appropriate for the young families?
And we, we get into this a little bit in the next question.
Yep, and, and so that leads into the next question, I know, but you know, far and away, we all like single-family houses, and is that going to get the young families here? And I think, again, if we built the small houses like we used to build, you know, the young professionals, that'd probably be in the duplexes or, or something like that, but.
Jed, can I make a, a comment?
Say again?
Can I make a comment?
Who's, who?
Andreas.
Yeah, go ahead, Andreas.
Yeah, so I think, you know, my wife is a real estate attorney. And we, you know, I've noticed that small houses are a lot more desirable for families, young families especially, for affordability reasons and for a sense of a little bit of privacy, right? Duplexes, you're right, I work at Pratt and Whitney. Most of the millennials and Gen Zs go into apartment complexes, so on, so forth. As, as a person with two young, you know, second, you know, two young kids, second one on, on the way, we chose Andover and moved here into a, a single-family house because of the privacy and the quiet, quiet and, and the country setting of this town. That's what we looking for, that's what we looked for, that's what we were searching for, and I think a lot, a lot of young families are, are in the same boat. Yeah, I think investment people, people want to invest, they, they want duplexes, you know. That's like New Britain kind of thing, you know.
And I think for the retirees, a small lot, small house, small maintenance.
Yes.
Small tax, that's what I would be looking for.
Fifty and over.
So anyhow, I, I think the, the data on the slide points to the answer for us.
Okay, and so, yeah, as, as Jed said, the, the, by far, the most popular answers were single-family, which is obviously the, the established character of the town, established history of settlement. And then adding single-family with accessory apartments, and then to a lesser extent, townhouses and duplexes. You know, obviously, people did not perceive Andover as a, as a community very different from what it is already. So, you know, three-family, four-family apartments and that sort of thing was not, was not as, as popular. Then we started asking some questions also about community resilience and sustainability, similar to the way we asked about new businesses in town, where again, the top priorities on this are inverted to reflect the longer bars. And so of the, of the resilience and sustainability items, upgrading the town's roads, bridges, culverts to reflect, you know, increased storm frequency and intensity, similar to the ones that we saw out in, in Western Connecticut this week, was the most popular answer, and the rest were kind of clustered around kind of, kind of middle grounds. Upgrading power and data infrastructures, making sure our, our road network is friendly to the bikes and pedestrians were common, although certainly not, not as popular as, as the, the keys of our bridges and roads and culverts. And then talking about natural resources in a very similar way, asking people to rank their priorities. Again, longer bars are higher priorities for more respondents. Focusing on trails that, you know, connecting different areas of town and different communities was the most popular, followed, you know, by Andover Lake, water quality, stewardship and management of existing open spaces as opposed to acquiring more, as well as investing in active recreation. Slightly fewer people wanted to invest in more open space for passive forests, farms. And then fewer still said upgrading the Hop River Trail itself. But the, the fewest people said, you know, we're, we're all set in terms of our open space and, and natural resources. Most people believe that more could be done, more could be, could be invested. We then grabbed a question from the long-range planning study that was done a couple of years ago, back, what, I'm sorry, twenty eighteen? Eric?
Correct.
Correct, so where several, several key investments were, were listed, developing a town center, establishing a main street, actively marketing undeveloped Route Six commercial districts, investments to make three sixteen more bike head-friendly and less on acquiring new open space and, and more on stewardship and maintenance of existing open spaces. By far, and again, this was, this was weighted from a strongly agreed to a strongly disagree, one through five, weighted. And, and by easily the most popular top priority, strongly agree, was Route Six corridor undeveloped commercial property, where nearly forty percent strongly agreed with that, and, and combining strongly and agreeing, that was nearly seventy percent, over sixty-five percent, if my math is right on that. But this is by, by, sort of by far, the, the most common, and the rest kind of fell into the middle range.
I'm sorry, I have a question?
Yes.
On that last one.
Yeah.
What was the, on the far right, your weighted average, what did that mean?
So if you, so in that case, if you give a strongly agree, a one, an agree, a two, and then, you know, three, four, or five, it would, then, then it, you know, kind of spreads out that way. So if the average is, people are saying neither agree nor disagree, it would be a three. And so the, the, the weighted average, anything less than three is generally supported. And so the numbers that are closer to two or one are, are the, are the most, the most strongly agreed, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
So, so in this way, I highlighted the lowest number because that represented the strongest agreement. This one, we sort of took a look at the, the categories of services that the town currently provides, public schools, senior services, general government, parks and rec, public works, and a transfer station. And, you know, not, not to say any of these is unimportant, but generally speaking, where do people's priorities lie in terms of where they want to see their, their, their tax money being used? And public schools were the, the plurality, and again, the longer bars represent more answers. It was interesting, maybe not shocking, that most of the handwritten responses, which is to say the ones that were at the Town Hall, Library, Senior Center, were very, very strongly weighted towards senior services and, and much less weighted towards the, the public schools, which I think unsurprisingly reflects the demographics of the people filling out surveys in, in longhand rather than on, on the computers. But by, by and large, there was a lot of support for public schools and public works particularly, with the rest sort of falling, falling in the middle.
John, can I make a comment on that real quick?
Sure, I'll, I'll defer to the chairman, but it's fine with me.
Go ahead, Andreas.
Okay, so, you know, I looked at the survey and I'm looking at the public schools. RAMS got a good reputa- reputation. Andover needs a little bit of help, but the reason why I wouldn't put Andover schools as number one is because it's, they're in pretty good shape. So I think that it's being managed properly, so I would look at other things like senior services and maybe maintenance as a, something that's a little bit more important than public schools, in my opinion.
That's, that's an interesting take, that, that it's essentially, you feel like it's kind of in a good spot, kind of taken care of.
RAM is, is.
That's interesting, yeah, and I think that's, I'll, I'll be honest, that's not necessarily how I intended the phrasing of it, but I think that's an interesting, that's an interesting insight.
Yeah. Thank you.
Then we looked at some issues, a large number of issues that, that represented perhaps threats in the future, climate change, changing demographics, aging infrastructure, loss of plate, loss of sense of character, pandemic, economic growth, and so on. And again, from the, sort of the one to five, most, you know, very concerned to not concerned at all with that weighted average. And again, the, if you look at the column on the, on the right, the lowest numbers represent the most agreement, or in this case, the most concern. So we had easily aging infrastructure was the most common real concern, where people were very or somewhat concerned. That's a number under two, which is unusual in surveys like this. And then affordability of living in Andover was also a very popular response with, with, you know, strong majority saying that they were very or somewhat concerned. So I think, you know, age, the, 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 the population itself is aging and the infrastructure around us is aging and, and both of those things deserve a little bit of attention. I'll stop there right now.
Jed, would, can I make, make another comment? I'm sorry to be this person, I'm just an analytical person, but, you know, when, when you're looking at the aging infrastructure and you're looking at the affordability of living, that goes kind of hand in hand, right? If you're saying we have a population of, of retirees, that of course they're going to be concerned with affordability, right? Versus somebody like me, I, I think Andover has some of the lowest taxes around. So I'm, you know, for me, it's not really a concern because it's, it's affordable for young professional myself, or somebody who's, who's retired. I would think that, you know, that would be concerned, especially as retirement is, you know, cost of living is, is going up and inflation and so on, so.
I think that's a, that's an excellent point, and we'll, we'll actually get in a couple of slides to the, the demographics of people filling out the survey. So you can, you can kind of see the, the, the span of responses, yeah, and, and the weighting towards, towards senior responses, frankly, I'm sorry, Jed.
But as we started out, you know, we, we discussed how Andover has an aging population. It is older, you know, than, than the state average and, and, you know, the older than most other towns in Connecticut. And those people on a fixed income, they are, are being, you know, concerned with, with the taxes because, you know, social security is supposed to go up, what, less than three percent this year, and.
Yeah, inflation is seventeen, so.
Yep, so, well, so anyhow, the, the, the seniors are concerned about the affordability here, and it, and it is a big deal for them, so. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, and then I'll go, we, we add, had two open-ended responses, which is, one is, what is something you will hope, you hope will happen in Andover the next ten years? And I did a word cloud, the larger words are the more prevalent. I'm trying to find a better way to, to, to depict this because it, you know, it catches words like town or simple words like, you know.
Andover.
Right, Andover, hot, senior housing, and, and that, that doesn't, I'm trying to figure out a better way to do this without listing two hundred something responses. But so I may, I may update this, but, you know, issues of, of taxes, Andover Plaza, we have, you know, Properties Plaza, Andover Plaza. If you kind of combine some of these words, businesses, you know, where it says root, a lot of those are Route Six, and some people did the number, some people did the, the, the word, so. Word cloud is imperfect, but we're trying to capture some ideas here.
Well, and, and on that, there were, you know, there were a lot of fragments and phrases that didn't make additional, that didn't make sense to me, like new additional, or families will continue.
Right.
Will continue move. So now, if I just focused on the things that were a little more purple, you know, you've got Andover school, business, and seniors. Community. I don't know, I share your concern that, that, that didn't really hit the nail on the head for what we were looking for. And, and when, when we get done here, we'll spend a couple of minutes with the commission trying to find out, you know, what, what are the big priorities? You know, we've made a lot of progress, we've got the, the senior community centers done now. I think Eric's connectivity program is, got momentum behind it, that's going in the right direction. I've got some thoughts on where are we falling a little bit short and, and where we need to hope for, but it didn't show up on this chart, so.
Yeah.
If, if the punchline is different than what this picture shows, we've got to figure out how to tell the story right.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll, I'll spend a little time going through the actual open-ended responses and see if there's a, there's a better way to, to depict. So a similar issue with when we asked things that people are worried about over the next ten years, and if you look at, so we have, you know, words that stand out, crime, taxes, elementary school, businesses, you know, I think they do reflect some issues. And we have, you know, we have property taxes, we have increasing taxes, live tax increase. So, you know, I think this one maybe slightly better reflects, but there, there's, there may be a better way of depicting this, so.
Well, and, and even on this one, you know, you, you said crime jumped out a little bit. If you go back to the slides on the, what are the priorities or concerns or whatever, where you had a bunch of stuff, crime was the lowest of the bunch.
Yeah, right, but, but, you know, it's, I think it's, it's still on people's minds, even though they, they, they might not have ranked it as high as some of the other things.
Yeah.
Yeah. John, how many responses were there to this, these two?
Good question, I, I think it was about two-thirds participation where people actually filled something in. So my, my, my rough estimate is, is around one sixty, but, but I'm, I, I can check those numbers.
Yeah, I thought it was about the same. I was surprised how many answers we got, but.
So how many duplicates were, were there?
There were, there were very few verbatim duplicates, and that's part of the problem with, that was part of the problem with, with the word cloud, is, is it fails to capture something that's essentially is an identical sentiment that might use slightly different words. And so because the, the, the word cloud just, just treats words as, as shapes, you know, it doesn't think of them as ideas. So, yeah, how many of them are exactly the same? I, I, I'm not, I, I'm not sure. I will note that it didn't, I don't think it ended up on here. A number of, and it may be just because of the spelling and, and the syntax, but, you know, probably our most surprising frequently cited word for worried about was, is roundabout or, or rotary.
I was going to make a comment on that, that, oh, surprised that didn't pop in there, because I know Diane was out beating the drum pretty hard on roundabouts.
Yeah, we, we, we did get a remarkable number of similarly-minded alarmists, let's say, of, of the, of the roundabout, the roundabout scourge.
Well, I, I think you had one particular resident that's been beating the drum about that. I'm not so sure that's such a groundswell of opinion.
It may just been everyone, everyone else sitting at that.
Right.
Right.
Person getting everybody wound up.
Yeah, hey, everybody at my table, could you write in roundabouts, please?
So I wasn't going to make a humorous comment on that, John, but you brought it up.
Sorry about that, yeah. And if it, if it helps any, I just had a meeting this afternoon in Columbia where we will hopefully take some of the roundabout heat off of you because the town manager and I were going to be pushing for one at the, at the Route Six, Route sixty-six interchange. So hopefully we'll, we'll shift the, shift the DOT's eyes over, over eastward. Okay, and then, and then to round out the survey, we just asked a couple of the demographics questions. The, the age, age of respondents. Basically, you know, it, it split, it was, it was basically, you know, adults. We only had a few young adults, eighteen to twenty-nine. And then relatively evenly split with slightly more in the forty-five to sixty and sixty to sixty-nine demographics. But, you know, if you combine basically your sixty-plus, that was by far, you know, it depends on how you slice it, but that was by far the, the, the largest group was sixty-plus. And relatively well-to-do, I think, which reflects the, the overall demographics in Andover, but also, you know, sort of well-established property owners. You know, if you combine basically over a hundred thousand, you're, you're looking at the majority, more than fifty percent of your, of your respondent population was, was making over a hundred. And again, reflecting Andover's demographic, nearly, nearly all homeowners or, you know, with or without a mortgage, very, very few renters participating, but very, very few renters in Andover, period. So we'll go, go through that, and I think I'll try to, I'll, can work on cleaning up the, the word cloud presentation a little bit. And then we go into the actual vision statement I would plan to, and, and the planning and zoning commission, we've, we've gone through this for a couple of months, so I won't read through, but will. I, I, at that presentation, I will read through the vision statement because I think it's important to hear out loud and including the, the six we envision. Um sentences that kind of break out the um specific topic areas. Again, you know, quality of life, affordable housing, conservation, economic development, complete streets and climate change, becoming. Um, the six thematic keys, which then we will get into in terms of chapter breakdown. Um, and then I would introduce this as again, taking the 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 quality of life we envision statement. And breaking that down into several of the of the topics, schools, housing, recreation, uh government. And so on, um that will form essentially the 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 skeleton, the the major bones of. Um, the planet itself, and then again, breaking down these these six statements. And then and and basically talking about so that this is where we are, we have our vision statement, we have our our structure. And now it's going to be a a series of conversations to get into the meat of those topics and and start to build. A list of goals and priority actions um in each of those areas. And then we'd leave it to um an open, an open uh comment opportunity, so that's. Perhaps less brief than I intended, but that's the a a brief overview of the of the presentation. Um, and as Jed said, that the target, if if it works with everyone, is um Thursday evening, the twelfth. Of September. And I'll turn it back over to you, Jed.
Okay, so any comments in general from any of the commission members? You know, i- is it ready to go to the public? Are there things? That don't reflect how we we think we should be headed?
I I think we did a great job on the we envision. We really kicked that around for hours.
Yep, we did.
I think that I think that I hope I'm hoping for a for a a good, a good. Uh reception to some of that, especially after reading it out loud, because I think it has some impact there.
I uh. The only, so when when I go through all this, the only thing that uh. That strikes me is we're not headed in the right direction on is the housing. You know, that's where I think our emphasis needs to be going forward, you know, parks and wrecks, we got. A big project going for the recreation fields over there uh now upgrading that. Unity Senior Center done, uh the the connectivity, uh you know. Big strides going forward and that's gonna take a while, but uh. I think, uh, you know, we need some some smaller, low maintenance housing for people. To uh to make it more affordable than what the big houses are right now.
Feel the same way, Jed, I think we really need to push that. Like it almost needs to like bring be brought to the selectmen every month. I know you don't want to hear that or Eric, but it's a really big deal that has to be pushed.
Okay, so you should bring it to the selectmen every month.
Well, we I'm I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, you know, that that's that's something that could be done. So just so we keep it moving in some way, I'm I'm not sure how, but.
Anybody on the commission doesn't think that's uh that's where our focus needs to be? And I'm, you know, I want to hear if that's what you think.
You you really kind of have to define what are your goals for the housing? Because I don't think necessarily my goals and my approach for that. Line up with what the commission thinks. I mean, my goal would be to push very small housing units. And push zoning availability and push um ADA units strongly in town. And is that really what you want? I mean, what do you? And and the the secondary question is, is the town willing to actually support it? Because the reality is you cannot build affordable housing in the state of Connecticut. Without subsidies, it just doesn't work. You know, I mean, Jim and I sat down with a builder that's looking at developing potentially a spot. On Bunker Hill Road, um you know, he's a man after my own heart. His interest is building, you know, energy efficient buildings, but he was very upfront that. You know, he's looked at it a bunch of times and said, can he build small starter homes? And his answer is no, in today's climate, that's just not, you cannot build that at a profit. In today's market, so really, what do you want? I mean. And how do you wanna, how do you wanna try to subsidize it? What is it that you want, you know? Not easy questions, I'm not saying I got all the answers. Right, those are, those are questions I think that me and Jed were talking about, that maybe John, John could um. You know, put some emphasis on.
Yeah, and and the, you know, and I think I think well, when we get into that, and again, those those are going, those are discussions that are going to happen in. The the meetings in which we sort of cover those individual topics. Um, but the answer is, is I think often going to be, you know. Not all of the above, but many of the above. There's not a silver bullet, you know, we're not going to build. Little tiny, you know, tiny cottage cluster communities around Andover and, you know, walk away and say. Job done, um it's going to be a number of things and it's going to be, you know, maybe some some tax incentives on certain types of housing, maybe. Uh some regulatory changes to encourage different types of housing. You know, in engaging town, town land, it's, there's going to be. Five, six, seven different things that that are going to combine to address the issue. It's not, it's not going to be a single thing.
I guess, I guess the other comment I have before we leave this topic is. How do we advertise it? You know, uh, we're essentially. Just over three weeks away from doing this. And that that time's going to go by pretty fast. Uh, I know, Eric, you've been successful at getting. Crowds to show up at uh at your town meetings, um.
That's because they're mad.
What's that?
That's because they're mad.
Yes, well, we, yes.
We can, we need to figure out how to tick some people off between now and then.
Yep, um.
Put put afford on affordable housing in.
But, uh, yeah, we had talked about that, that would uh. Not affordable housing, low income housing.
Low income housing.
That would get everybody to show up, um. It would be nice to have a little ad in the River East, John, kind of like we did with the uh. The survey and uh. I know we we used the uh town communication system to advertise it. Pretty good too, um. So, so that would be good.
Make a flyer.
Some people show up.
Jed, make a flyer for it. We'll use the uh community alert system. We'll put it on the town's social media. We'll put something in the River East, but you got to develop the flyer for what, you know, what it is you want to tell them. Um, and then turn it over to Kate and she can, she can get that out there. You could also consider. Since you're the chair of the commission, having a conversation, giving Mike Sinkowitz of the River East. A call and ask them whether they would be willing to do a quick story on it. Um, and, you know, especially if you gave him a press release. And made it as easy as possible for him to publish something, um because they're pretty, pretty lazy, so if you give them content, they'll publish it. Not, I was not saying that in a bad way, I'm just saying, if you make it of them, the more likely it is you are to get what you want.
Okay, let me, let me think about that a little bit and uh. We'll go from there.
So, yeah, Jed, if there's, if there's stuff that you want me to generate, the the flyer or whatever, just, yeah, hit me with a couple of the of the key points to 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 focus on.
Okay, I will.
Happy to do it.
That'll be my next.
For my position as a senior, I think that even putting something about increased affordable housing, even though if it's not. Low income housing, but if you say affordable, I think you'll get more people that way too, because we're looking for something that we can afford.
Yep.
Um, and then the other thing I wanted to say was the town alert system, I thought that was going to be used. It for the opening of the senior community center, we never got anything, so I don't know if that went out to everybody or if that wasn't used then.
Well, you need to check your registration because I certainly got it.
Yeah, I think I did too, but.
I didn't get it in.
Okay, well, then my suggestion is that you may be on the emergency alert list, but not on the regular communications alert.
Oh, okay, maybe.
All right, we'll check.
Okay, well, good job, John, putting that together and uh. I hope we get some people to come uh come and actually see it.
That would be good.
So uh next up on the agenda is uh old business. Property at Pot seventy Pine Ridge Drive, uh Jim, I'll turn that over to you for a little update.
Jim, you're still muted if you're talking.
Yes, uh background to this, it is uh with the two lot subdivision at the end of Pine Ridge Drive. Actually, with one of the lots had entrance on Old Farms, um took quite a while to get through. The regulatory process involved Wetlands Crossing, um. Two houses were to be were proposed and one. Is substantially built and some problems arose and were brought to my attention. Um specifically, the the house that was built was. Deviated from the approved plan in that it it was uh largely the. More land was was um cleared and the the house was sighted a little bit differently. And the the. Drainage outlet for the roof leaders was placed diff- in a different location. Then had originally been approved. Um, what is a continues to be a problem right now is there was a considerable amount of. Fill that was placed off site on the post property. And um. Became became a big issue and I've been working with Joe Wagner, the Wetlands agent. And the E N S controls, there was some blowout on a hill, seems to be contained. Um, and the. Outlet for the drainage was moved back onto the the applicant property that the house being built. Um, but there there was a lot of concern about the deviation from the from the plan and. Obviously, the offsite fill, I don't really have an approximation of that, that amount, it's two, two areas. That that were basically cleared and and filled. Um, one on a hillside, one sloping off. As well towards towards the post, both of them towards the post farm. Um, and. I was asked to put this on the agenda because of concerns over the the fact that. It different, the actual construction differed from the approval. And and the fallout from it.
So. I'm going over my mind, Jim, uh on. On what the, what is the next step for action on that particular situation?
Well, I mean, there's. Joe is is handling the Wetlands opponent, um. He he is aware that he's going to have to move. To to regrade, to to move fill, um. And I'm gonna need some sort of plan for that. And Joe, as Wetlands agent, will, that that will involve work in the the upland review area. So that will involve the Wetlands agent, if not the the commission.
So would we expect a modification to the approved plan to come back before the commission that? Similarly to what we're working on with the gravel pit?
I don't, I personally thought that they fell under sort of just field adjustments, um. It's my opinion. I I don't see where it would would be coming back to the commission.
Okay, I guess, so, well, we had mentioned we would have further conversation on that, but.
Yeah.
I thought, you know, and and again, uh, what what I need to get myself smarter on is. Apparently, there can be a little bit of a difference between the. Plan that gets approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the plan that gets approved by the building official. And what actually happens and. In this particular case, I thought the delta was pretty excessive.
Um, yeah.
And in in a manner similar to the gravel pit. I don't think it's good for the town to have. The. To set the standard where. It's okay to not follow the plan, and I I'm concerned that that's. What we're seeing, I've seen it on smaller extents, a lot of different places, but. These two were really egregious and and I think we need to make sure that we're setting the standard that the town. Want to have. Or else we'll continue to deal with these kinds of problems and.
Understood.
And and I'm, I don't feel like spending my time that way. So anyhow, I that's probably it uh. On where we are with Pine Ridge tonight and uh. Where to follow on that at the next meeting. Any other questions or comments for Jim on that one? Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is. The filling of the Planning and Zoning Commission vacancy. And uh. To Pat, Andreas and Don, thank you very much for for showing interest in the commission. You know, previous to right now. I've never had more people interested than I've had openings. So, right this minute, the the commission has the the dilemma that uh. We can only choose one of you because that's all the openings we have right now. Good position to be in, but uh. When people want to volunteer and help out their town, I'd like to uh give each of you that opportunity and unfortunately, I can't. The term that the successful applicant would be filling expires next November. You know, when when Steve Nelson resigned uh for. His personal reasons here, a couple of months back, um, that's when his term expired. We've got a couple of other people, so. So the uh. Whoever gets appointed tonight will be up for election again, if you were to choose to continue on until. The further uh in the election next November. It's uh. Fair to note that there are some training requirements for. The Planning and Zoning Commission, they're not very big, um. I think the minimum requirement is four and a half hours of training every other year. You know, the state thinks that people on the Planning and Zoning Commission ought to know a little bit about it, and I think that's a good idea too, um. And I've done all the courses and and I think they've been very helpful. Most, most of the training requirements, every two years, the Connecticut Bar Association. Holds a training session in March on a Saturday. It goes from maybe nine in the morning till four in the afternoon, covers everything you need to do to meet the requirements. Um, and I thought that those training sessions were very good. I I think I've attended three of them now, and so uh. They're very helpful. The way uh, the way the selection process is going to work, and and there were a couple of different ways. The way, uh, the way the selection process is gonna work and, and there were a couple of different ways that I could have done that. But we need a motion for the commission to go into executive session, which is essentially a closed hearing, so it won't be, uh, recorded and on the record and other members of the public won't be there. And we'll invite the, uh, the candidates in one at a time. And, uh, in order that, uh, no candidate has, uh, the advantage of listening to the other guy answer whatever questions or give his little spiel on why he wants to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission and that sort of thing.
Um, Jed, can I, can I weigh in here for a second?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Um, Don Dangley was here with me in my office on the Zoom meeting and had to leave it a few minutes ago. A few minutes, um, indicated he'd be, he had another engagement, indicated he'd be happy to meet with the commission, uh, at any future time. If, if, if the position is not filled this evening.
Okay, very good. Anyhow, there'll be two of you that, one at a time, we'll, we'll bring in, it'd be Patrick's first because you had your application. Your, your letter of interest first and Andreas, you'll come in second after, uh, after that, uh, and, and John will help you get into a little breakout room that the commission goes into so that we can have that, uh, private conversation.
So, okay, so Jed, let me, let's be clear here. I'm going to, uh, pause the recording right now.
We should still be recording.
Okay, sorry, yep.
That motion.
Yep, yep.
So, um, and then we'll come after we've, we've talked about, uh, the two applicants. We'll come out of your session, go back into the regular meeting, which is just like we just did with the, the recording thing. And any action we take has to be taken in the public regular meeting, so we, we won't take action out in the executive session. Well, we'll do that, uh, back in the meeting. So as soon as we get done and it won't take very long, we'll we'll, uh, vote on the applicant.
Dad, did you?
Go ahead, Leanne, yep.
And did you say that we do or don't continue recording?
Once we get into executive session, we will stop recording. We, we're not in executive session yet. I need to make a motion and the commission needs to agree to go into executive session before we can.
And to Jed, just to be clear, we, I, when we do this, um, is it, is, are you just inviting the commissioners themselves? Is Eric invited? Is Jim invited? Am I invited? And, and who's being left out?
So that, uh, that will be in the motion. I need to specify who, uh, is going to attend. And, and it will include, uh, you, John, Eric and Jim, as long as Don is no longer with him there. If, uh, Don was using Jim's computer, we, we would not allow him into the executive session, but we'll cover that in the motion. I have that written out, ready to go. But that's how, that's how I think the process is gonna work. Did you have another question, Leanne?
No.
Okay, very good. So do the, uh, candidates, Pat and Andreas, uh, any questions before we get started there?
No questions.
Okay, very good. So I make a motion to enter executive session, discuss personnel interested in filling the vacancy created by the resignation of Steve Nelson for the term expiring in November twenty twenty five. Personnel invited into the executive session include all commission members, town administrator, town planner, zoning enforcement officers and each of the interested parties one at a time.
I'll second that.
Okay, that was you, Scott?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Any discussion on the motion?
Just to note the time, it's eight thirty eight.
Okay, yep, and, and when we go to executive session, we will note the time on there too. Yes, thank you, Leanne. Any other discussion?
So, um, I'm sorry, oh, you go, go ahead and vote first.
Yep, okay, hearing none, uh, I'll call for a vote, Anne.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes five zero zero. And Anne Marie, even though you're not seated on the commission tonight, uh, you are part of the commission and, uh, will be able to attend the executive session.
Okay, so I'm, I'm pausing the recording now.
Sorry, everybody, my that little miracle that I was talking about, uh, on getting Zoom to work, uh, caught up to me for saying that and, uh, I, I dropped off and, and had to come back in, so apologize for the delay. The host has asked you to start your video.
That was me, Jed. We'd like to see you.
Oh. Okay, very good. Yep, sorry, sorry about that. Got everything, uh, goofed up there, but, uh, I see Andreas, I'm looking for Patrick, uh, there he is, okay, so we got both of you guys here, um. Thank you both for showing an interest in the Planning and Zoning Commission. You know, we all thought both of you were, were superior candidates. And as we said, uh, at the onset, breaks my heart that we can only pick one, but we can only pick one. And, and so, uh, with that, uh, I would, uh, invite the commission to, uh, make a motion to, uh, select somebody.
Okay, I nominate Patrick Dougherty for the open position on Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, I, uh, I will call for a vote, Anne.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion passes five zero zero and before you go away, Andreas, um, we, uh, we thought you're right up. Everything was, uh, just, uh, superior. We'd be pleased to have you. Uh, Patrick, uh, had, you know, one of the things that, that we talked about was when I, I joined the commission, I came in, uh, as an alternate. Uh, learned a lot about how it worked for a year or so before I became a regular commission member. Um, and I thought that was very beneficial to me. I'm hoping that when we have another opening either on the commission or the, for an alternate or the election comes and you put your name in the hat for a position that would, you, you would choose to do so. You would, uh, be absolutely a welcome addition to the commission. We just, uh, felt that with Patrick's previous experience, previous working with several of the people here. And the fact that it was right on, on the commission, how could we let that talent get away from us again? And so, uh, we did and, uh,
No hard feelings. It's all good.
Makes me want to resign working down to make a spot for you, Andreas. Uh, I really would, but, but that wouldn't be not gonna do that either. Um, so, so that's that. Patrick, uh, thank you for your interest. Uh, we, uh, uh, welcome you back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and, uh, I, I expect that, uh, that working relationship that you had in the past will, will continue, uh, on into the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
Next up. New business. Request for authorization of minor revision to site plan for four ninety Lake Road Dollar General. Uh, Jim, I turn it over to you. While we're waiting for Jim to unmute himself, Patrick, I would seat you right now, but you have to get sworn in by, uh, Carol.
Yes, sir.
And so, uh, we can't do that, but
That's all right. I should probably, I will attend the rest of the meeting so I make sure I'm up to speed anyway.
Very good. Thank you. Yep.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay, I received a request from Dollar Tree to add a along the, the Route six facade towards the, the west end of the building. And there's no real provision in the regulations that allow me to, to grant minor revisions. And it was suggested that I come before the commission for, to seek authorization to sign off on that.
What, can you repeat that again? We missed that, what they asked for.
Propane, propane rack. So it's propane tanks.
So it's a swap out?
Swap out, yeah. It's not loading.
It's, and I'm sorry, Jim, it's, it's basically just a it's a portable cage thing. It's not a, it's not a permanent structure.
No, it's not.
Okay.
I, I wasn't sure whether to bring it to the commission or not, quite honestly, I just.
Jim and I talked about this a little bit. And I'm gonna read from our regulations on enforcement. Says the commission may by resolution permit the zoning enforcement officer to authorize minor non substantial deviations from the approved special exemption, special permits. So when, when Jim didn't know whether to bring it to the commission or not, I, I knew that we had the, the power to, uh, make it so that he could, uh, handle that. I think it is a minor revision. And, uh, and so I will make a motion to, uh, permit the zoning enforcement officer to authorize minor non substantial deviations from the approved special permit for the Dollar General store. In case of propane tank.
Yeah.
That was a second from you, Anne?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on that motion?
It, it's ju- it's gas tanks?
Propane tanks, yeah.
Propane tanks? What, what size propane tank?
The standard size, I, I don't know the, the exact amount.
Yeah, twenty pound, twenty gallon, whatever, you know, you get on your barbecue grill.
Oh, they're gonna be selling them.
Yeah, well, there'll be, it's a swap out. Bring in your empty one and you take home a full one.
I know, and Eric has his hand up, Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
Eric? I didn't know whether you wanted other comments on this. What I would say is that I have no real objection to that. Um, has, have you consulted with the fire marshal, number one? Um, because that seems kind of appropriate since you're storing flammable liquids there. Um, secondly, does it interfere with the sidewalk in that location? And does it reduce it past the three foot width you would require for handicapped accessibility? That would be my second question. And then if you decide those things are satisfied, you want to go ahead and give him permission to do it, I would ask that you suggest to him that you condition the approval on this of, uh, rectifying one of the things that they did after they got site plan approval and a C O which was put an ice machine smack in the middle of what was designated for cycle parking. Um, because they made that completely unusable for bike parking because the only place to like lock your bike up blocks the ice machine. Um, and since our regulations require that applicants put in cycling parking, you should probably insist on that if you're gonna grant them something extra. And now I'll get off my soapbox. Thanks for that consideration.
To answer your questions, I did not, I realized, um, as it came up this evening, that I should have checked with the fire marshal. I did not. I'd be happy to do so. Uh, it, it will not impede on the sidewalk traffic flow. Um, and I actually had, uh, brought up the issue, they have a banner sign as well that I was gonna ask be eliminated prior to moving forward with, with the propane tank swap out.
I agree with Eric that moving the ice machines, uh, ought to be, uh, done as well. So.
There gonna be a place for the ice machine?
Gotta be a place better than right next to the bike rack.
I'll, I'll take a look at it. With them.
But you're, Jim, so you're amenable to the, uh, suggestions that Eric provided there?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't know whether you're comfortable making a motion with, uh, having the fire marshal approve, continued upon fire marshal approval, whether you'd like to see actual fire marshal weigh in, it's your call.
Well, I would like to see the fire marshal weigh in, but I don't think it needs to change. You know, we're, we're turning the matter over to you and I expect that you would
Okay.
Do, do all those things that should be done.
All the above.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on, uh, on this particular issue? And so, uh, I do think that, uh, the discussion we had warranted bringing it before the commission because those were some good things to talk about. Um, but, uh, with
I, I have a question of John, if I, if I may. John, when, when you asked the question about you raised question whether it was portable, were you implying that maybe, maybe you shouldn't have come to site plan, wouldn't it impact the site plan? Is that the way I took that or?
Yeah, I, I'm just, just trying to understand, you know, the extent of the proposed change. It's not, it's really not a structural change to the site plan. It's an, an pertinent, you know, item that can be moved this way and that. So it's, it's not, it's not, it's not like they're bumping out the building. It's, it's a, you know, portable cage.
I mean, I asked because I respect your opinion. I was just curious if, um,
Yeah, no, I'm just, I was just wondering if, if the, if even the request is applicable because it's not actually structural.
Right, I got it. That, that's why I posed the question. Thanks.
Any other comments?
So if they, if they come, if they have to change something on the outside, do they have to come to the commission or to Jim to add or take away from what's going on in the facade of that place?
Yeah, I think it really depends on how you define sort of the, the, the core elements of the site plan. You know, so, you know, obviously if the building is getting bigger or the parking lot is rearranging and the, the driveway is going to a different place, those are fundamental changes to a site plan.
Right.
Um, you know, this, this is, uh, you know, it's something important that could, you know, block the function of the building as Kevin. I'm sorry, as Eric pointed out, that, you know, could block sidewalk. So, and if it's meant to be there for a long term thing, then, then it functionally becomes part of the site. But so for instance, if, if, if a tree dies and he wants to replant it or, you know, offset a tree five feet from where it shows on the site plan, that's not something that you would necessarily force him to come back for. So it's, it's kind of a, a judgment call on what's a significant modification of the site plan and what's not. But if it, I think if it, if it affects the function of the, the land use, it should probably be given some consideration. So even though it's, you know, it's, it's essentially temporary. It's not, it's not a physical part of the building and it's probably only gonna be out there seasonal during grilling weather, probably, you know, April through October or something like that. Um, it, you know, it, it could affect the function of the, of the, of the land use. So I think, you know, It, you know, it it could affect the function of the of the of the land use. So I think, you know, Jim is his instincts are right to to bring it, bring it to you.
Right, right. And they have to have the same, the correct amount of sidewalk area also. On top of that, correct?
Yeah, there's a minimum minimum width of sidewalk that'll be maintained.
Yeah. And again, yeah, that's the 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 minimum width because but again, you know, the state had allowed. Outdoor display, you know, during COVID, we allowed, you know, restaurants to have have meals outside and 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 retail to do outdoor display. That outdoor display allowance has continued. So you can, you know, with with, you know, temporary clothing racks or whatever can block. Some of the the sidewalk, but you wouldn't, you know, on a temporary basis, but you wouldn't want to do it. You know, in a way that that obstructs all all flow. So again, it's it's kind of a a temporary versus permanent situation.
Any other comments? Okay, so again, just for review, the the motion is to allow Jim to. Authorize if appropriate, the the installation of the propane cage and. And handle that without further input than what he's already got from the commission and.
That's your motion, Jed?
No, I had the better motion earlier on. That was just to summarize it so you remembered. I think Marina will have she'll she'll record it from the first motion. To get it into the minutes. If you want, I can read the first. I can read the particular words right out of the. The zoning regs again. And rather than discuss it, I just will. So. I make a motion to permit the zoning enforcement officer to authorize minor non substantial deviations. From the approved special permit for Dollar General in the case of a propane cage. That's it. And I can't remember. I think it was Ann that seconded. Yeah, so that's the motion that's. On the table.
That's a good motion.
Okay, so with that, I'll call for vote, Ann.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion passes five zero zero. Next up. Is eight B, receive application from Vale Soccer Club. And set public hearing. Jim?
Okay, I did receive an application today. I have substantially completed checklist with that. I do not have site plans as of yet. I did receive a check. And I hope to be working with. The soccer folks to. To complete those plant to to draw up those plans. To complete the application. This specifically is for is for lighting on the soccer field on Riverside Drive, Long Hill Road.
Okay, and you'll get that posted here soon so we can all take a look at it?
Yes, it will.
Is it fairly straightforward application that? We should hold a public hearing next meeting?
Yes. Time timing is an issue for them. Kind of they kind of let it go a little bit, I think, in my opinion. You know, they like to be able to light the the fields for for practices at night.
I'd like to have reviewed the application before we came to the meeting today too, but.
Right.
There you go.
They had all summer.
They had all summer.
Oh, I know.
And I know you've been pinging on them, Jim, so it's not like it came up as a surprise, but.
And I told them a long time ago.
Yep, I know you've been working with them as well, Scott, so. But be that as it may. In an effort to. To have to support the Vale Soccer Club and. With that, support the town of Andover because I guess they they do provide a little income for us. I'll make a motion that we. Hold a public hearing in conjunction with our. Next meeting on, I think it's September seventeenth.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ann.
It was Lee Ann this time.
Lee Ann, okay, thank you, Lee Ann. Any discussion?
Jim, I could be wrong, but I think Vale is V A L E.
It is. You're correct. I I put that on the agenda before I had the application. It's V L A V A L E, correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Ann.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes five zero zero. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the public hearing. And regular meeting conducted on July sixteenth, twenty twenty four. And. Did anybody have any comments? On. The meeting minutes? Let's I'm gonna do both of them together because they're all on one sheet of paper. Did somebody was gonna make a comment?
Lee Ann.
Yes, Lee Ann, I think it's I'm looking at it. I'm trying to look at it. Now, I think it's maybe six B. There's just an apostrophe that's in the wrong place. It's the word applicant.
Yep, okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing minutes and the regular meeting minutes. From the Planning and Zoning Commission. On Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty four amended. In paragraph six, the second line where we put the apostrophe in the right place on the word applicants.
Second.
Thank you, Ann. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Ann.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
Susan?
I abstained because I wasn't there.
Okay. And I vote aye as well. The motion passes four zero one with Susan England abstaining. And just for everybody's information, certainly. You do not have to abstain because you weren't at the meeting. If you read the minutes and and. We're we're comfortable that there was nothing sticking out like a sore thumb, but certainly abstaining is is a good path to either options acceptable. Next up is correspondence, Jim. Anything there?
None.
Okay, coming on to administrative reports. Oh, you put me first this time. Well, we didn't have a inland wetlands meeting, so I got nothing to report. I look forward to the next meeting where we have a discussion on the Pine Ridge subdivision and. I'll let you know how that goes over there. But that's it for me. Jim, you're up.
Okay, I was on vacation for a few weeks, so I have an abbreviated. Time period here to to report on. There are a number of properties that are for sale that have generated a lot of a lot of questions, a lot of inquiries, a lot of a lot of interest. Including a number of, well, one home on the lake and another. Another property. Somebody's looking to do a teardown and and I just wanted to point this out because it's interesting that Andover Lake is Andover is now becoming a teardown lake. I don't think there's been that many in the last few years. It just seems to be a little, seems to be a few more. I've also, let's see, had a brought thirty eight lakeside compliance on a flight ordinance. They get a complaint on woodchips at the church, which they just sort of appeared over at the end of the parking lot, a lot of a lot of woodchips that. And that they're really on the edge of a floodplain in wetlands area. And I referred the matter to Joe Wagner. Who contacted the church and was assured that would be taken care of. So I feel comfortable about that. That's pretty much all I have, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Is it appropriate for you to share with us the address on the lake? Because I walk around lake and I have not seen any for sale signs on.
Okay, one of them is five Sunset. The other was two sixty eight, which I think has sold. It was recently purchased. And now it's now they're interested in the teardown, I think. A meeting with them, meeting with representatives on Thursday. Two sixty eight. I think it sold a few months ago.
Two sixty eight or three sixty eight?
I have two sixty eight.
Two sixty eight. Okay, yeah, I am familiar with that house now. It sold the. The family inherited it from the parents. So it had a probably title transfer, but.
Okay.
He can solve that very easily, Jed. Just right into the zoning regulations, the maximum house size. Don't allow anybody to build a house bigger than seven hundred and fifty square feet. You're done. No more McMansions.
Their lot isn't much bigger than that, so so I guess. That'll. Come to pass as well. It can't be very big because the lot's not. Any other questions for Jim? Okay, John?
In interest of time, I think most of my report was covered in the in the PowerPoint presentation and other discussion. Yeah, nothing, nothing further for me at this time.
I have a question for John. What was the talk that you had with a builder? We're we're on Bunker Hill, you said?
That was with myself.
That was Eric and I.
Okay, yeah, that was not me, sorry.
Where? So who who was that Eric?
Builder. I don't know the guy's name. That's not relevant to me.
The property was on Bunker Hill?
Yep.
And you're being tight lipped about this?
Uh, I don't know the.
What parcel was it?
It's the one, the. The guy that used to own Mid State Excavation.
Zimmerman Properties, property.
The guy's name.
Property with the house, the farmhouse and thirty seven acres of land.
Joey Zimmerman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, couldn't think of his last name. I only hired him a couple of times, but. I'm old.
You're being elusive.
No, I just have a terrible memory.
Any other questions for John? In the interest of time.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't know the guy's name either.
Yeah, okay. Next up is commission discussion or miscellaneous. And I've got nothing for that one. Anybody?
Jed?
Yes, Lee Ann.
I have a question about what you just said a few minutes ago to Susan about abstaining from the minutes.
Yep.
I've heard that said before fairly recently and I've always thought. That people are supposed to abstain unless they listen. To the public, I mean, not the not just public hearing, there might not even have been a public hearing, but listen to the recording. Because in this, this, you may be right. It may be the law or or Roberts rules or something. My point is that unless you've done that. I I've seen and I've seen people do what you just said. If you think that it's probably accurate or the person taking the minutes. Always does a good job or something, but my concern, again, whether it's. A real thing or not, is that the person really doesn't know what transpired. And I think that's what Susan was saying. She can't attest to what happened, so she abstained, which is what most people do. Sometimes people will vote anyway.
I understand that. I just. I do think that if somebody. Like you mentioned, has routinely attended the meetings, looked at the the minutes, reviewed the the video of it. I would have no problem with that person. And it's just, you know, how comfortable that person is on whether or not they're in a position to vote. It's not improper to vote. On the minutes. It's also proper to abstain, so. I just wanted to let everybody know that that option was available.
If I if I could, there 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 is a distinction between. Voting on minutes and voting on applications if you haven't familiarized yourself with the record and the recording. You certainly shouldn't. If you miss a meeting, you shouldn't vote on an application if you've missed some of it and didn't familiarize, but minutes are sort of a different issue. It's a little bit of a lower bar.
I see it because it it really, in my experience, never used to be done that way. In other words, certainly, somebody would say for the record. If you if they missed a meeting, somebody would put themselves on the record saying, I listened to the recording. These days you can see many things on YouTube. So again, I just, my point is that. To be safe. Unless somebody's done that, you really don't know that what you're. What you're voting on is what actually happened.
True, yeah.
It's my opinion.
I agree.
I like to be safe.
No, I absolutely. I just wanted to point out that if you felt. That you understood the issues that were going on and had done your homework like a lot of people do when they. Miss a meeting. I know, Lee Ann, you always watch those things when you're not here. And and if you if you chose to vote, I would be absolutely comfortable with that. But that's.
I know. I'm still waiting for the board of selectmen meeting from eight days ago. The minutes aren't even up yet. That's not our issue, but that's just an example of something else I'm trying to watch.
Yeah, okay. Very good. And I think most people would normally abstain. It's just easier, but. But it would be okay to do it the other way. Any other commission discussion on any other topics? Hearing none, we'll move on to public comment. And I guess the only one from the public here is you, Patrick.
Yeah, here I am.
Yeah. No, anything for us tonight before you leave?
Uh, nope.
Okay.
I just asked that I be invited to the rest of the meetings until I get officially on board and well, I'm gonna go swearing on. Next available chance, but let me know.
You got till the seventeenth of September.
Okay, I don't want to overstep and jump in until I'm official, so.
Yep, I got you. And and thank you for your willingness to serve. We look forward to having you on the commission.
Thank you very much and looking forward to serve. Thank you.
Next meeting date and venue. So the next meeting is gonna be a public hearing at seven o'clock. We'll try to do two public hearings there. And then followed by a regular meeting. And the venue, if I can pull it off, will be a hybrid meeting. Where we meet in the new senior center, community center. And I'm gonna try and see if we can set up in that little lounge area. I think that's big enough for a commission meeting. The acoustics might be a little better. And I think by the seventeenth, we would be in a pretty good shape to pull that off.
Where would the public be?
The public would be in that little room too. I think it's big enough for. Now, oh, the public thing on the twelfth of September?
Well, no, I mean, if you're gonna have a hybrid meeting. Well, no, I mean, if you're gonna have a hybrid meeting, you have to make accommodations for the public. How many people can you really seat in there?
Well, I'll, I'll go check it out. That, uh, I don't expect many from the public to be there, but you never can tell. Yep. So we'll check. I, I know, uh, there was a bit of a reverb echo with all the people in the, uh, the big room uh, when we had the open house and, uh, trying to make the acoustics good. Um, we'll let you know. Okay. Next up is, uh,
Thanks for making it a hybrid meeting.
Say again, Lee Ann?
Uh, thanks for, for planning to make it a hybrid meeting.
Yep. Well, I think, uh, yo, John, unless significant pressure were put to attendant person will always choose to be, uh, remote as well. And I think that's reasonable as well as our attorneys.
I'll, I'll, I'll be there in person for the public information session on twelve.
Yep. Um, anything else? With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Thank you, Ann. Um, any discussion? No. Call for a vote, Ann?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Can I vote aye as well? Motion passes five zero zero. And I appreciate everybody, uh, attendance and participation tonight. Little longer than normal. Next month might be a little longer than normal too. We'll see how it goes. But thank you, everybody. Good night.